All right, call it a order. Today is Thursday, August 22, 2004. This is our normal, regularly scheduled 7:00 PM meeting. We will be opening up with our opening prayer from Pastor Karam Bishop from the Span Ministries Church.
Bow our heads. Father in heaven, we thank you. We thank you for being our God, our Father, our friend, our provider, Lord. Right now, we pray that you would continue to bless this community, Lord. We pray over this, this community, the, the services that are provided by the city. We pray over this board, this council, that you continue to use them to, to, just to help everyone that's represented from the government services to the businesses here, to the schools and the students. Lord, right now, we just pray for safety for all the children as they started back to school. We pray for a good year. And, Lord, we just pray that Talmadge would continue to be a city on a hill that, that other communities can look to for, for an example of how to serve you and to glorify you in everything they do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And this evening, we have a very special group doing our Pledge of Allegiance. We have the Talmadge Girl Scout Troop, 91529. So they're going to lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bozick.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Mary is excused this evening.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
Thank you. We have six present, one absent. Moving on to item four, correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes from 8:00, 8:24, the council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
All right. Minutes approved, six to zero. Moving on to our financial reports. We do not have any this evening. Moving on to item six, public hearings. We do not have any public hearings. We will move into item seven, community input, when we will be starting with Councilman Bolus will be presenting a certificate of appreciation to the Talmadge Girl Scout Troop leaders, Erin Oliver and Sarah Knowles.
All right. Thank you all for being here this evening. I really appreciate it. So I wanted to start by giving some brief bio-information on our troop leaders and then going into notable accomplishments and kind of what, I asked them to provide me with some examples on what inspired them to be troop leaders. So I'm going to start with Sarah. So we have Sarah Knowles. Starting out with some family information, she's married to her husband, Justin. She has three children, Cameron, who's 12, Caleb, who's 10, and Laura, who's nine. Terms of Talmadge history, her and Justin moved to Talmadge 13 years ago, shortly after they were married. And then, in terms of inspiration for being a troop leader, she was a Girl Scout for many years and her mom was also a troop leader. And when her daughter Laura told her that she wanted to join Girl Scout, she was very excited and jumped the opportunity to lead her troop. And thinking back on all the fun memories she had with her own mother that made her, for her troop, she knew she wanted to do the same for her daughter. And she's been a leader for some time, leading these young girls in, in our troop, and she's made the world a better place in teaching them lifelong lessons and inspiring, and is very inspiring in itself. Notable accomplishments, I wanted to call out a few things here. She's very proud of, of our troop for many reasons. She could not have asked for a better group of girls for the troop. They're all kind, sweet, and so well behaved. She loves each and every one of the girls very much and they have made, and they all have the very best families who all get along and are so supportive of Erin and Sarah as troop leaders. Seeing how much these girls have grown over the last couple of years is really inspiring. They pretty much host their own award shows, award ceremonies now, are held several times a year. The girls run the show, announcing their very own entire ceremonies. They explain to their audiences what their badges are and what they have earned, how they did it, and what they learned. They have also put on mini skits. Watching them become leaders is really rewarding for these troop leaders. Moving on into more accomplishments, I'd like to call out that, that stand out to her in mind over the past couple of years was the Talmadge Service Unit, which is made up of all Girl Scout troops in Talmadge, had a contest of which troop, the troops could clear the most fire hydrants of snow. And at the time, they were daisies. They won the contest and cleared a total of 46 hydrants. They earned a pizza party for their efforts. And last year, our troop completed an entire list of requirements to be recognized as a super troop and received a very cool patch for it. Over the past few years, our troop has made many donations to different organizations such as pet supplies to the Summit County Humane Society, books to Akron Children's Hospital, a monetary donation to the Summit County Children's Services Beds for Kids Program, and many, many pull tabs to the Ronald McDonald House. So, thank you, Sarah, very much. All right. Next up, I wanted to recognize Erin Oliver. So Erin and her husband, Mo, have been married for 16 years and have two children, Dylan, age 12, Grace, is one of our Girl Scouts who is celebrating her ninth birthday today. Just want to take a moment, say happy birthday. Erin and her husband are both lifelong Talmadge residents and graduates of Talmadge High School, class of 2003. Erin comes from a family of educators. Her parents, Don and Debbie Duffy, both worked for Talmadge City Schools. Erin herself was formerly a second grade schoolteacher in the Talmadge City School District, a Talmadge Recreation Center employee, and a Talmadge Parks and Rec Summer Camp Counselor. She stepped away from the workforce when her first child was born to become a stay-at-home mother. With a passion for interacting with children and providing them with fun, educational experiences, volunteering as a Girl Scout troop leader seemed like a great fit for her. It's been a life-giving, it's been a life-giving way for her to share her passions and gifts with others and to give back to the community she so dearly loves. While her Girl Scout troop was received commendable awards, such as being distinguished as a super troop, what she is most proud of is the relationship she has with the girls and the loving support culture she's helped to foster amongst the families in the troop. She congratulates the girls who have accomplished so much. They have delivered, they've delivered donated Girl Scouts to cookies, to Talmadge Police and Fire Departments, and to our 911 Dispatch Center, conducted donation drives to donate books to Akron Children's Hospital, canned goods to the Akron, Akron Food Bank, pet care items to Summit County Humane Society, and pop tabs to around McDonald House. They even raised enough money to purchase a crib to donate to Summit County Children's Services. Erin has thoroughly enjoyed watching the girls give back to the community in these, and other ways, and is excited to see the girls continue to grow and flourish. Thank you, Erin. All right. And with that, I'd like to present them with a certificate of appreciation presented to both of them for outstanding service to the residents of the city of Talmadge, Ohio. If I could ask one of the parents to come maybe get a photo, and then we'll continue. Girls, you want to come up?
Thank you, Councilman Jonathan, and, or Councilman Bolus, I'm sorry. And thank you to the Girl Scout troop and their, their leaders. So while they clear the chamber, we'll give them just a few seconds here. We're going to continue with our community input section of our agenda this evening. If you have anything that you would like to bring up to council this evening that is outside of anything that's on our agenda this evening, you may do so now. Each speaker will be given two minutes. We ask that you give your, your name, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Make sure you guys sign in as well. But then you'll be given two minutes. Just state your name, your address, and your time will begin.
Good evening. My name is Scott Silbaugh. I live at 835 Penwood Drive and want to talk to the property next door to us that was taken over by trespassers about a month ago. The man staying there has a criminal record of violent crime with a handgun. The woman there was pulled over thanks to the diligent work of our Talmadge Police Department with a stolen handgun in her car. She was charged with receiving stolen weapon, stolen, stolen goods and is going through that process now, but they continue to stay there. This is, you know, I recognize that the city's and the police department's hands are somewhat tied because Open Door that owns the property has to take action for, for the police and city to take their actions. When this first happened, there was a significant police presence on our cul-de-sac and, in the area, and that resulted in the woman being pulled over and, and those charges coming up. But recently, in the last week, two weeks, there's been very little presence. And that's something that's within our control. And, you know, that police presence is a deterrent to criminal activity. I think that's a fair statement. And my concern is for the safety of my family and our neighbors. And I called the police Tuesday night because I saw, normally there's one car in the driveway, one car in the garage. Tuesday night, there were four cars in the driveway and cars coming and going. So that indicated to me that they're more comfortable here. They feel like they can take more activities. I don't know what they're doing, but these are not good people. They stole a house a month ago. These, they're, the violent crime thing was years ago, but they're carrying around a stolen gun in their car. I called the police non-emergency line and asked for increased presence on the street. One patrol car drove through the cul-de-sac, was there for three to four seconds. There wasn't a chance for these people to see that there's cops in the area. You know, ideally, and I'd love it if a patrol car sat in my driveway 24/7, but I know that's not realistic, but there's somewhere in between three seconds and regular presence there. So that's disappointing that that's not happening more. So I, I think, what is it that we can do as citizens in that neighborhood to help protect ourselves? And what can the city do to help protect us?
Well, thank you, Scott. I'll give you definitely more than two minutes there, but, but it's well worth what, what topic you're discussing this evening. So to, to kind of address, actually, before we kind of give our input on anything, is there anyone else in the audience that has input regarding this matter?
It'd be nice to hear what your response to Scott is first.
Sure. You want to take it?
Yeah. So one of the questions that they're talking to many of the residents is how did the water get into the name of the individual that's living there? And can the water be shut off if the property owner contacts the city and states that it wants it shut off?
So if the property owner takes action, we would certainly look into the matter and then we would investigate depending on what information's provided to us about legitimacy or illegitimacy of that. That suggestion has been made to, to the property owner and it's really, at this point, in their court to take the next steps.
Okay. I think it was relayed to Mr. Silbaugh that Open Door stated to him that it's giving the police permission to enter the property because of the criminal activity and the finding of the stolen handgun. Do we know of any other issues where the police have stepped on the property to, for any kind of illegal activity?
I don't believe there's been any other arrests with.
In the process of filing, I believe it was communicated by the city, correct me if I'm wrong, that they, Open Door, would have to file a restraining order or eviction notice or trespassing notice. Is that correct?
The property owner is the victim in this matter and they have to take action. And really, at this point, they are the ones that need to take the next step.
Okay. What was communicated to them by the city?
They, it has been, we have authorized the possibility of charges. I am not going to get in-depth with regard to an ongoing investigation in a public forum like this. We have had conversations with the neighbors and we have shared what we are able to, but again, I'm not going to get into that in a public forum.
If their, final question, if they're trespassing and they were cited for trespassing and they keep going back to the property, can trespassing charges be brought against them again?
Yes, you can have multiple trespassing charges. Again, however, you have to understand that the property owner has to take that action to sign those complaints and then appear and prosecute the case down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had some follow-up questions about that. So you said there's been no other arrests at the property, but how many times has there been calls for presence of a police department representative to come on site?
I, I don't know. I know there's been calls for service due to various activity and the police have been monitoring and are aware of the situation and have been out there. I don't know the number of times.
You had mentioned that if the property owner had requested that the water be turned off, that we would look into that. What does that mean? What does that mean by look into it? I, I guess my, my question is, as a property owner, if I call and say I want my water turned off?
We would talk with the property owner, that's what I'm saying. We would work with the property owner to resolve whatever issue there may be with regard to that.
So it's highly likely that the water would be turned off if they request that?
That's correct. But you do have to keep in mind that they may decide that they don't want to necessarily have that situation. For some people, that may be a reason to leave a property. For others, that may be reason to do more damage to a property. So that property owner's going to have to take, make that decision.
Can you explain the process? This sounds like a squatting situation. They've essentially taken over the home, right? So can you just explain in general terms, not necessarily speaking specifically, but what, because it's not, like if somebody doesn't pay their rent, you can put a 3D notice on the door and you file and you get the writ and it's a process. But my understanding is it's a little bit different in a squatter situation. Can you just explain a little bit of what that looks like?
So it depends on the facts and circumstances of each case. We evaluate each case based on the facts. This one did present as a different situation initially. Information came out differently, so things kind of evolved with this. And so, again, there's not one, one size fits all outcome to, to these sorts of situations. They can be complicated.
If there's further legal issues, crimes being committed because of the situation going on at that house right now, could the property owners be held liable for any of that, for not taking action?
I would doubt that that would be a situation where, at least not in the city's eyes. I don't know whether, I mean, neighbors are welcome to seek their own private counsel and ask that question of a private attorney. There's not a criminal act that the city would be involved with, that.
And as a result of this, have we evaluated any of our processes for getting water turned on and about evaluating those requests, maybe making some revisions?
The contract we have in hand, I reviewed, and it appears to be, based on my research, have been actually opened by an Open Door employee. We've discussed with Open Door that they may want to evaluate if that is a legitimate employee or not.
So our process is, and I believe a tenant can get a form off the internet and take it to the property owner to make the decision whether water bill either stays in the name of the property owner or in the name of the tenant. Is that correct?
That is correct. The water bill is not actually, the water bill is currently in an Open Door's name.
Okay. Does that form need to be notarized?
Typically, we're dealing with landlords that are on a regular basis, so no, we do not have them notarize the form. We are aware of what properties around the city most of the time are being rented. It's kind of the same people all the time. Like I said, in this situation, that form has not been filled out or presented to us. The, the water is in Open Door's name.
It's in Open Door's name. Okay, so it's going to Open Door. The bill is going to Open Door.
I will have to re-double check where the bill is being mailed to, but we have an address to Open Door with the, the water in their name.
Okay.
And a contract, as I stated, that appears to be signed by someone who.
Is employed by.
Is employed by Open Door.
Okay, all right. So because of that, if they request that water to be turned off, that's an easier solution or it's an easier way to have it water turned off if they request that to be turned off?
Again, we would work out with them, is this an authorized person? Is this what you want, et cetera, et cetera? And again, there may be, you know, factors that they would be weighing as a property owner as to whether or not that's the best next step for them to do.
Understood.
So has the city, anyone from the city been in contact with the property owner and has had a physical conversation with them?
Yes, we've had multiple conversations. The police have had multiple conversations and we've had ongoing contact.
Okay. All right, thank you. So continuing with our community, but are there any other members here or citizens here in the chamber that would like to speak? Come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Bob Hurst. I live at 780 Penwood. The difficulty that I'm having with this is, and with all due respect, Megan, we talk about Open Door being the victim. Yes, they are one of the victims, but the victims that are being overlooked in this situation are the people in the neighborhood. There are people on our street that are scared to death. They don't know what to do. There are criminals living next door to them. There is extremely limited police presence. Our property values can take a major hit with these type of things. And unfortunately, aside from a water conversation here, I haven't heard any responses to Scott's concerns. Megan, have, we dealt with squatting situations in Talmadge previously?
This is a unique situation for us. However, it has happened all over the, it happens all over the country. It happens all over, unfortunately, Ohio, et cetera. So it, it does happen.
I'm asking about Talmadge.
Right. I, I just said that, no, I don't think that we've experienced one before.
Okay, thank you.
And let me just say that I, I totally understand the neighbor's frustration. I get that. Unfortunately, we do have people who are bad actors that are embedded in our community and we try to do the best we can to patrol and take the steps that we can, and we're, we're doing that in this situation.
We're not getting that impression.
Okay, well, we'll.
There's been a significant drop off in police presence over the last year or two.
And I, and I agree, completely agree that we don't.
If we can, I'm sorry, if we can, if you want to come back to the podium, you'll have to do that. Thank you.
And so typically by council rules, direct all your questions to me and I can defer to Megan.
I completely agree that we have to draw the line at harassing people, even criminals. We have to draw the line there. But we can also use some street savvy to make things inconvenient for people who are breaking laws besides stealing a house. Take a look at their vehicle, folks. Take a look at blackout windows. These are things that people get tickets for all the time. But we know that there's things that are going on, but we just let it go. I won't say anything else.
I do just want to point out that we did, you know, I think council is aware of the safety initiatives that we take and the directives that the chief does give to the officers to do extra patrols. This neighborhood has been on the list and I believe they're trying to do their best to get there. They do have to respond to other calls, so I don't know that they can, you know, again, as the one gentleman said, you can't necessarily have them there all the time, but I do know that they have been, you know, advised by the chief to, to make those extra patrols in that neighborhood. And we'll be passing on the information to the chief again to just reiterate that.
Thank you. Are there any other members in the audience that would like to speak? No, I think there is one other. I'm sorry.
About the same topic or something?
I'm sorry?
About the same topic or something different?
Or something different, yeah. About the same topic or something different. Any other input? Sure. You can come up to the podium.
Before, I'm sorry, I just had one additional comment, unless this is related to the Penwood. Okay, if I could just ask a couple of follow-up questions, if that's okay with you, sir? Thank you. I just wanted to go back to my original question about squatting, because I'm still not exactly clear of the process. I have been a landlord in my previous life and I haven't had squatters, but I've completed a lot of evictions, so I'm familiar with that process, right? And my general understanding is that the property owner would need to obtain their own legal counsel and file an eviction specific in the reason being squatting. And this is where my familiarity isn't as much, because most of the evictions that in my previous life was for non-payment of rent. So that's where it gets a little bit different. That property owner would have to file and there would be a court hearing. Those squatters would need to come to court or they would be told that this is the date, whether they show or not. Usually, they do not show. And then there is a writ issued and a bailiff comes out, changes the locks, and they are removed from the property. That's my experience with a non-payment of rent. That is public record if an eviction of any kind is filed. Is there anything on public record that anything has been filed to date?
The last communication that I had with them, they were working with their legal counsel. I'm not sure exactly where in the process they are with the eviction, but that was going to be a step that they needed to take. Then we explored the possibility of potential criminal charges, which we, again, have authorized in this matter. That in and of itself is not likely to resolve the situation. The eviction is the way to resolve the situation. So that. So that process, to our understanding, is underway. Exactly where in the process it is, I'm not 100% certain right now, but they have indicated that they are taking those steps.
Okay. What's the time period in a non-payment of rent? It's three days, from the time you post something on their door to the time where you can take action?
They did already post a three-day notice, so they have the ability to move to the next steps, which is filing in court.
Okay. And they, I believe a gentleman said this has been over a month. We do know that they've posted a three-day notice, and they have not filed since that three-day notice has been posted, is what it appears to be?
Again, this, in this particular case, there was some indication that there was potentially a victimization of the people who actually moved in as well, and so that was being discussed. The veracity of that at this point is questionable, but again, I don't want to get into the specifics of this particular case. But there was reasons, I believe, that the property owner chose to wait on that process. I don't believe that they're waiting any longer.
Okay. That does help clear up a little bit, thank you.
Sorry. Mayor is Director of Public Safety. Can we ensure that we have increased police presence at 825 Penwood?
I believe you were also copied on the communication from our police chief on our initiatives with our extra patrols, and it does indicate on that, I'm looking at it right here, 825 Penwood, Open Door's in the process of evicting subjects, so it is on the list. They are doing extra patrols. And I just want to say to all the residents, this is something we do not want in our city at all, anywhere. This is horrific, and I do believe you guys are victims. I really do, and I'm very sorry for that, too. We are working on this. We're having daily discussions on this. It's not that we're trying to hide behind anything. We're working to the best that we can, but at this point in time, it is in Open Door's ballcourt right now. So I'm sorry that you guys have to deal with this. I really, really am. We're doing everything that we can on our end, and we're trying to push the envelope as much as we can. So, again, I'm sorry that we're all dealing with this, and you guys have to live by it, and I really apologize for that.
And I'd like to add that I did see the report, and I did see that in there, but the people here today have said that they have not seen that police presence in the last week or two.
Thank you. I believe we have another audience member that would like to speak?
Pep Wall, 834 Penwood. I guess my question is, you know, you say you're having discussions with these people, Open Door, whomever. How hard are you pushing them? I mean, and we're talking to them and all that. This is our neighborhood, you know? You guys go home to your homes, you don't have to deal with it. You deal with it maybe tomorrow, maybe tomorrow afternoon, maybe you don't, if something else happens. We're there all the time. I drive down, I see the truck. I hear the truck. I see four cars. Like Bob said, we have blacked-out windows, front and back. Nobody blacks out windows in their house. Give me a break. I just, I guess what, I think all of us, we are, we are, we are really frustrated. And I guess I don't sense, and maybe you couldn't have, I don't sense the same frustration from any of you. I don't.
Well, sir, we have gotten the answer, yes, we're taking the action. So we have gotten that answer with regard to the eviction process.
Does somebody call every day?
So I don't know how more, I don't know how much more, well, they had, they're, they said they are working with their legal counsel, so I can't, I can't...
Sure you can.
Make their legal counsel...
Sure you can.
No, no, I really can't. We have, we have asked, we have said that it's a problem, we have said it's an issue, and we have gotten the answer, we are, we are in process. So that's...
Do you believe that?
I do believe that. They, they have a property interest in getting these people out of the house. They're not able to sell the house while they have the people in the house, so they, they have a property interest in that.
They don't seem too concerned. I called them, and I talked to them, and the guy said, "Well, you know, we're in 80, we're in, we're regional, we have 80 different cities and things like that." And I said to the guy, "I don't care if you're in 200. If I have houses in 200, I would know, I would want to know what, what my, my rights are as the owner to throw somebody out." I mean, and I'm, I'm not an attorney, I'm not, but I'm a pretty common sense kind of guy. It seems to me that this is breaking and entering, plain and simple.
Unfortunately, it doesn't meet those elements, given the facts and circumstances of this case.
Well, I, I guess, at least speaking for me, and hopefully most of these other people, our neighbors, frustrate, it's, it's, it's getting past frustration. I mean, it's a month, and nothing's, nothing's happened. We're talking to them, we're this, that, and, but, but we're not getting anywhere. And we all know that tossing somebody out can take three months. So are we going to invite them over for Thanksgiving dinner? That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wall, just to let you know, too, I am very much invested in this situation. As you probably know, my sister-in-law's sitting right in the back row, and my niece, I mean, they're sitting, it's affecting my family. So we are doing everything we can within the letter of the law to get this thing expedited.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Hurst. I'm Bob's wife. We live at 780 Penwood Drive. I did call the police and tell them the truck, the main truck, there's main traffic on our street, no license plates, front or back. Police have been notified. Why don't they do anything? They can pull in any of our driveways and catch him every morning when he leaves. We would get arrested if we didn't have license plates. The other thing is, since we're not getting anywhere to resolve this, maybe we get media involved? Newspaper, TV, maybe they'll go talk to Open, whatever, or somebody. We don't know what else to do. Nobody seems to want to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Brown. I live at 824 Penwood Drive, and I am the sister-in-law she was talking about. I also have my four little grandkids now living at our house. They've been there all summer. We've had to cage them and tell them they had to stay in the back of the house because of the traffic flow, what, since they've moved in, and it was around July 4th. The following Monday after July 4th, the week after, another young couple was getting out of their car, going up to the house along with another gentleman, and I thought, "Oh, these are our new neighbors." The resale sign went down, and I, we saw people moving in. So I went over and said, "Hi, welcome to the neighborhood. When your kids, when you get settled a little bit, come on over. They can play in the backyard with our kids." The people who lived, used to live there, had a little girl, was over all the time. She goes, "What do you mean? We're here to buy the house." I said, "Buy the house? No, 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 no." And that's how it got reported. Now, I don't know what you guys are going to do in the future, but you need to do something to screen the business before it even gets into the neighborhoods. Are you screening these outside with everything being online, electronic signatures? Everything is getting falsified so quickly and so easily that this has just now become a, and before you know it, they're embedded, and you can't get them out. Do we have anything in place here in the city of Towage? Should screen businesses before they open their doors, or just come in and start selling properties or whatnot? Or do we just have an open door, just come on in? Do we?
Again, by law, if they're a legal entity, they're allowed to buy property. So if they're a corporation, they're deemed under the, if they, if they have incorporated, incorporated, or have an LLC, or have some kind of proper business entity, then, then they're allowed to transact business and...
So we have nothing in place to protect our city at all? Have you thought about...
Anyone can, I mean, any, any person and corporations are deemed to be persons under, you know, the Supreme Court has ruled that they are deemed to have the same level of constitutional rights as, as real human beings, then they can, they can buy property.
It's not only the buying property, but they bought it to resell it, but they're a business, and they're doing transactions here in our city. And then to where do our rights end up, on the very bottom?
You know, I would just encourage, I would encourage people to be aware of what companies are, they're dealing with, and making sure they're doing their research, and always, and always looking up, you know, anybody, whether it's a contractor that they're using, or who they're doing business with, and just trying to make sure that they've screened them appropriately. But yeah, there's not, there's not anything legally that we can do to, to keep a legal corporation from purchasing a property.
How much screening did you go through when you put the water into the Open Door's name?
That was already discussed.
No, did you, did you ask for proof that the person who was saying that they were the employee, that they were an actual employee?
So that, they, they are required to provide identification and go through the steps that are outlined in our policies and procedures, and that was already discussed by the finance director.
Thank you, Karen. So I, I understand the line of questioning that Karen, Mrs. Brown has. And I think from the city's standpoint, what can we do, and correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but what can we do about businesses that are the bad actors, or that are conducting in, in a way that is not protecting either the homeowner's rights, or the, the individual who's taking ownership or temporary ownership, if it's like a renter that's having issues? What can the city do legally against corporations like that, or businesses like that?
I mean, when people have a problem with a business, they can report to the Better Business Bureau, they can report to the Ohio Attorney General's Office. The Ohio Attorney General's Office compiles that, if there's multiple complaints, consumer complaints, they, they have a whole division that handles consumer complaints, and they actually have a wider reach, because they can compile information from not just like our community alone, but from throughout the state of Ohio. And then if they have enough evidence of criminal action, then they have taken criminal action against some of these entities.
Okay, so as, as a city entity, have we gone through any of those steps to report that business?
Well, at this point in time, there's nothing that, I mean, again, that, that entity has not done anything illegal that now...
It sounds like perhaps they may have, because...
I don't think so, and I, and again, I don't want to get into...
They have a document that they're presenting to a city government to, that's fraudulent, whether that's the individual...
There is no evidence that the document that they opened up their contract with is fraudulent.
Okay.
What I stated was, it appears to be a legitimate contract that was opened by someone who is employed by Open Door. So the water, when they purchased the property, appears to have been legitimately opened by Open Door to be in their name. That's, that's, that's what I stated, that the contract...
Sue.
They would have to identify if the person who presented the contract was being fraudulent in their representation as being the, employed by Open Door. What I have right now was a contract presented to me and signed by a representative of Open Door to put the water into Open Door's name.
And so I guess that's, that's what I'm asking, is the question of, is, has that employee been verified with Open Door?
Megan has instructed them to, if they are interested, to look, talk to us.
But I guess, why are we giving it an option? Shouldn't we be saying, "Is this a legitimate employee of yours or not?" Because if not, then how do we know, as a city entity, whether or not this employee could be coming here and opening up water bills for properties that, and, and be doing this whole thing across the entire community?
Because at the end of the day, they have to, at the end of the day, it's their, they have to take the action. They have, it's, if they wanted, if they don't, if they don't take action, then what are, what are we going to do?
I, I think that that is, is the city sitting on their...
And again, I will, I will say, I will, I will say also that we have to be very careful that, you know, there's different roles, and so we have to follow the procedures for the utility department, we have to follow the procedures for the police department. We can't have police intervention reaching their hand into the utility department. So we have made the suggestion, we have been saying, we have made the suggestion, we have offered that as a possible route that they should explore, and they need to decide whether or not they want to take those steps to explore that.
See, I think we could do more in that situation. When, when we, when we have someone that has those documents, the proper documents to request that the water be turned on, what forms of identification do we require? Is there any forms of identification?
Yes, we require them to submit a copy of their driver's license.
Okay, so that particular driver's license, have we verified that that is a legitimate driver's license?
The driver's license matches the name of the person who signed the document.
Because I guess my question then would be, if it is determined that that is a fraudulent document, is that not one step that the city can take against that individual and/or company, because they are an actor of that company? They are presenting fraudulent information to a city entity...
Which is a possibility, depending on the next steps that the victim in this matter, which would be the property owner, would take. And I will also point out that we take far more steps than most utilities do. So if you look at what Ohio Edison requires, or what Dominion requires when you move, or what the telephone company requires, you don't even have to sign a contract or come and present ID. I've done all those transactions when I've moved via the phone, a phone call. So I will just point out that we already go above and beyond what most utilities would require.
I think that's something worth looking into.
Thank you.
Let me ask the question this way. If Open Door were to communicate to you that that person who signed that contract is not an employee of Open Door, can we, without Open Door's permission, because we know at that point it's a fraudulent document that was signed, can we act on that be, on behalf of Open Door? Because Open Door said that this person is not, is not a legitimate employee. Can we shut the water off?
We would have a potential for criminal action. And again, there's a, there's a risk of harm to the property owner. They have to weigh that. So they, they, whether they wanted to continue water service, if, if we get to the point where no one's paying a bill, that's the next step.
Yeah, I, I...
So all those things are on the table. We're aware of all these things. We've had discussions of all these things. We're looking at all these things, and we're doing the best we can to address the situation.
And, and I get that, I get your full, I get your thought, train of thought, where you say that if the water's turned off, then the people that are in it are going to cause more damage to the home, right? I get that, but that is on Open Door, because the water would have never been turned on, because it's a fraudulent document. If the water was already off, right? Open Door didn't turn that water on, because the form's signed by someone who's not of Open Door. And that might...
You guys keep stating that, and there's no evidence at this point in time...
I understand that, I understand that.
That the person who signed that contract does not work for Open Door, because you guys keep repeating and saying...
I said, if it comes back, if it comes back, if it comes back that that person is not an employee of Open Door, and that's not their signature, then we can shut that water off, because that, that document is not legitimate.
Something that could help clarify, I know this is out of order, but I apologize, but something that could help clarify this is, what was the order in which the water was shut off and turned over to Open Door? Did Open Door...
The Open Door contacted, my understanding is, the water was never shut off at the property. This all occurred when the property transferred. There was never, there was never a, we went out and turned off the water because somebody moved, and we turned it back on. And typically, that doesn't happen when people move. There's a, it's a seamless transition. We don't typically do that. So there was never a time where we went out and shut off the water in that, so that's why I'm saying, there's no evidence at this time that there was a fraudulent contract, and then it would be up to, if Open Door revealed that, it would be then up to them if they wanted to pursue having a contract to keep the water on.
But we don't know where that water bill is going as of right now. That's something to be...
I will have to, I will have to look that up. I don't have that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry.
Law Director Raiber, am I correct in assuming that this originated through... Law Director Raiber, am I correct in assuming that this originated through a, they, they gained access to the house through somebody giving them the code to the box without a realtor actually being there?
They gained access through illegal means, yes.
Okay. Is there currently any laws in the city or the state that prohibits a showing without a licensed agent present?
No, and in fact, I think there is, I was just reading an article actually that just came out. There's a new change to some of the real estate rules that in fact, they're moving towards having, having only seller agents and not buyer agents. And so I don't know how that will be working in the future, like at least for the fees that they're coming, that only the seller agents are supposed to be getting paid now or some kind of change like that, which I, knowing that this circumstance, was very curious as to how that would, what the long-term impacts of that would be.
Would there be anything stopping the city from drafting an ordinance requiring any showing in within city limits to have to have a licensed agent present and sort of cut this off for any future events? I mean, it seems like a pretty simple fix, not, not as much for you people that are obviously going through a lot right now, but perhaps...
Probably something back on the market.
Yeah, to, to prevent this in the future, I, I feel like...
I'm willing to explore that as an option. I don't, I don't have an answer right now for you.
I, I would encourage us to look into that, or if you guys can look into that. And it seems like it could be fairly simple legislation that could prevent us future issues like this, just requiring that a licensed agent has to be there for a showing. No more giving out codes and cutting some of these internet sellers off at the knees, which should probably help.
Thank you. I do know that there are some laws related to the real estate agents and when, and when they cannot enter the home. And it has to be in the presence of a licensed real estate agent and the seller agent has to be aware that they're going to enter that home. So if they were unaware, then that is an illegal entry. So, but I also want to make mention too that the state of Ohio is actively working towards drafting, or there has been drafted legislation already. There are two bills currently in the works, House Bill 478 and House Bill 480. Both bills address homeowner's rights in favor of obviously the squatter's rights. So, so they are actively discussing this. The one bill, if it does get approved, all that needs is a signature by the governor and it takes effect. So it could literally happen any day. So obviously it doesn't quite help this situation at the moment, but just know that there are some, some bills out there that are being discussed.
Excuse me, what are you talking about water? What about other utilities? They just got Spectrum installed, cable TV and all that?
If you could come up to the mic, miss, I'm sorry.
I don't. So they just had Spectrum installed last week. Who's paying for that and whose name is that in? And why are they allowed to do that? And again, they're using our trash. I mean, maybe they're paying for trash, I don't know, but somebody's paying for the utilities and trash. Are we paying for the trash because they're stealing it? I don't know.
I think those are all great questions and I think those, this...
Let me take a crack at that.
Will certainly need to be looked at and, go ahead, Mike.
It's easy, water's the only utility, sanitary sewer and, and water's the only utilities we run. So that's why, that's the topic. I mean, the rest of them, we have no control over. I mean, that's First Energy, Dominion.
Well, can you give the police out there and do something about driving without a license?
That, that, I would have to...
Somebody.
But the trash though, trust me, Kimball wouldn't pick it up if they weren't getting paid.
And then it'd be on your street.
Yeah, we know that, so that's a fact.
So as we, Law Director Raiber, as we get further developments in this, right? Because I know you've been in contact with them and, you know, they can contact us at any minute, right? How do we keep the citizens that live around 825 Penwood up to date with the current information that we're getting?
I mean, it will become public record once these actions are taken, if actions are taken. They're welcome, like I said, I've been, we've been responsive to phone calls. I've had phone conversations with people when they've called in. They're welcome to contact the police department as well and ask. Some people, like, there's not, like, we, we, unfortunately, we have these situations and I don't know who wants to be contacted, when they want to be contacted. So if you want to leave your name and information with me, you know, we can attempt to do that. However, keep in mind again that, I mean, we only can know what we know, so we, we may not have all the information. It's not, some of these things are beyond our control, so, but you're, you're welcome to reach out or do any of the above.
As council members, I know there's several of us obviously that live in Ward Two and this is our neighborhood, right? If we would want, and this has been almost an hour-long conversation, and I do think that the residents, there's quite a few people here in the audience that are looking for a lot of information and updates. If anyone would want to entertain hosting a town hall with me, I'm happy to do that and we can relay information and take questions and kind of be that middle person between city administration and council and our neighbors.
Mrs. Epstein?
Yes.
Just to let you know too, I did have my, my after-hours with the mayor right before this council meeting and I did field quite a few, quite a bit of information from other residents that live in the Penwood area that were not here today, but, so there has already been a lot of lengthy talk.
Yes, and I suspect that they will want to continue these conversations, probably even before, I know you do that every single month, which is wonderful. So if that's a service that the residents would be interested in, I'm happy to do that and I'm happy to welcome anyone else to do that with me.
I would be happy to, to, to do that as well. This neighborhood is...
You can only do threes though for council.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't be a majority in the room, but this neighborhood used to be Ward Three and then was rezoned, redistrict with the charter in 2020. So, and I'm, I'm literally around the corner, so I'd be happy to do that.
Same, because I've talked to a lot of these residents, the residents already, so I'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience related to this topic?
I just want to say one thing, believe it, people, we, we feel your pain and I'm sure these people are working and we're going to do everything we possibly can. But the biggest thing we have to do is the legal in the right way. I think the biggest thing that we can do as a city is have more police present there. I think that would make them feel a lot more comfortable. And if we got to, you know, pay some overtime or whatever, we need to get more police out there to show our presence. Because if we're there a lot and illegal stuff's going on, that might be a deterrent so it doesn't continue. But we feel your pain, believe me. We just got to come up with the right answer to get it done. Thank you.
Ted, you don't feel like you have to go home right now being concerned that somebody might be messing with your house?
Oh, I agree, but we understand where you're going through, but we have to go through the, the right legal things, believe me.
Thank you. I guess my, my, my last remaining question related to this topic is, and I, I completely understand maybe why or why we didn't, but, and perhaps I missed it, but this has been going on for like 30 days roughly, maybe a little more. I guess for those of us on council, when did we discover that this was an issue?
I got a call from Ron Latimer who lives behind on Laura Ann about a week ago.
That's my first.
That was my first dealings with this.
Right. And so I guess, as, and again, I'm not trying to shame the legal department, I'm just asking why...
I will tell you exactly why. Because there's a lot of crime that happens in our community and we do not inform council of everything that is going on in our community. I am sorry. The fact that you're coming at me right now, asking why you didn't get notification, you, you are not going to be aware of everything that happens in our community. When it rises to the issue, look, initially, we thought this was going to be resolved quickly and it wasn't. And so now it's continuing to, we're continuing to deal with it. But this is not a, the law department's supposed to notify you when, when things are happening. Things happen all the time. There's a lot of stuff that happens. And no, we're not going to be notifying council members of every time that there's an issue.
Well, again, I'll go back. I'm not trying to shame the legal department. My only question is, when it appears that there are multiple residents within the same street, the same ward, bringing up issues, at least notify president of council or the, the ward council member.
With all due respect, it's a police matter at the end of the day. The police department have to investigate. That's the role the city is playing in this. And otherwise, it's a civil issue. The issue of the property owner having this and how they're going to deal with this is a civil matter. This is not something that the city can interject itself in. That's why we, we need them to take action and that's why we've been in communication with them. I understand the frustration of these folks. I, I have myself lived next to a person who was, who is a criminal. I have myself dealt with living next to a drug trafficker who was arrested on three separate occasions and had a pending case for months and months and months with charges that were very significant, felonies and crimes of violence and having weapons. And I had to wait for the justice system to work and it is hard and it is challenging and it was troublesome to me and I did not like it and I did not like that feeling. I understand, I can relate to you, I get it. I understand your frustration, but I also want to tell you that we are doing what we can, but we have to work within what the confines of the law are and we're doing the best to do that. So that's where I want to end it.
Thank you. And for anyone watching at home, anyone in the audience, please, any other future issues related to this, unrelated to this, contact your council members as well. We're willing to help be that voice for you. That's why we were elected by you guys. That's part of our position is to help advocate for our citizens. So by all means, please contact us. So I will move, continue moving forward with our community input. I believe there's another gentleman that had a topic he wanted to discuss.
Thank you, Council of Administration, appreciate your time.
Thank you, and again, we're sorry for what's going on.
My name's John Franks, 453 Regency Park Drive. Kind of sad that the Girl Scouts had to leave because I could use some cookies right now, but this, compared to that, this will be light-hearted, but Chip's going to be out in two months, if you know that. I know all about Chip. He's actually a good kid, but I don't know what went wrong. What I'm up here, three small little items here. First is West Avenue getting onto the circle. You know, you passed, it used to be A and W and you're getting onto the circle. It's a double lane there and a month or so ago, and this happened a couple of times, people always try to drive up and not to wait in the line and squeeze in up front. And I've witnessed twice somebody not letting them in and they've driven clear up on that for them almost into the circle. And one time, they had kids there collecting money for whatever. And if there was kids there, they would have been hit. You need to put some type of barrier to not allow them to cut across there to get into that lane, because that's the one road that works. And they want to go up there because they don't want to wait in and they, they're assuming someone's going to let them in, someone doesn't let them in. And if they don't force it, I've seen twice cars drive clear up on that thing. So if there was some type of barrier that didn't allow them to do that, I think you would solve that, especially if you're putting kids there. I just don't think it's smart to have kids going onto that circle, especially the circle today, it's much busier than it was. I've been here since 68. Another thing is door-to-door salesmen, where I live in Raiber, you could probably, it's getting old. They're, they're belligerent, they come and I've gotten a lot of them, I've got a no soliciting sign. And this isn't the 70s anymore and I don't like people that I don't know, uninvited, coming up to my door, not paying attention to my sign and ringing my doorbell. And I've been patient and a house across my street, Tom, I won't give his last name, his house was hit. And we're in a different era now. And I've got some street smarts and I know some of the tactics on that. And I grew up in Norman Rock Row era here in Talmadge in 68. We didn't have the problems we have today, okay? So I don't know if there's a no knock policy, but they don't follow it, okay? They don't follow it. And so I just want to, it gets irritating. If it was just once, one person a summer, it's all the time. And they're on private property. If you go to Walmart or Lowe's, you're not allowed to solicit. They'll call the police and you've got to get off the property. But I shouldn't have to be put into that all the time. And then they lie to me, they sell fear and I won't even go into some of the things and I've been patient with them. So if there's a no dock policy, if you think they follow it, I'd like to be on it. I don't know what you got to do, but that's it, okay? And the very last thing, I just want to mention, I noticed on one of the, a lot of the campaign literature, you're not putting your, your party denominations on there, paid for by friends and stuff. And I just find that a little strange. I don't, I'd like to know why. If you're a Democrat, say you're a Democrat, be proud of your party. If you're a Republican, say you're a Republican, be proud of your party. I feel like you're a car seller and wants to sell me a car, but you don't want to tell me what dealership he works for, what car. What are you trying to hide? It's politics. Let the chips fall where they fall. I, I don't understand why you don't do that, because...
Thank you, sir. We, sorry, I got to cut you off.
Okay.
So, but to help answer some of your questions, so you had three main concerns, sounds like wanting to help protect the safety of the money collectors on West Avenue when, when there are anyone present out there.
Yeah, and particularly, these are kids, but anybody, but I mean, right there, right on that circle.
Anyone, correct. And then, you know, the door-to-door sales. So those are two topics that I think we probably already have. I know we already have some no solicitation within...
We have a peddler solicitor permit they're supposed to have, so you can always ask whether they have a permit. You have the no solicitation sign, they should not be coming and approaching your house if you have the no solicitation sign. And there is a no-knock list that we do keep that they're supposed to avoid the houses on the no-knock list. So if, if there are solicitors in your neighborhood that are not following those rules, you, you can, you know, make contact with the police department.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's fine.
And to answer your last question, we can't control the political literature on what they do, do, do not put on there, but...
I know, it seems like pretty small things, but I remember you came and I liked to put K O A on, because I knew Rick. Rick and I got along, we was my friend, we wrestled, we did all kinds of things, didn't, we didn't let politics get in the way, whatever, and he was a great guy, so that's why I did. But I just, because I don't always know who's what and that, and politics, pretty division today. I mean, the lines are pretty drawn pretty, it wasn't like it used to be. So I was just wondering, because they used to put them on all the time and stuff and I, I didn't know what the purpose was.
Great, thank you, sir.
Sir, we've got a question on his first point. Service Director Rohr, similar to the smaller circle on Howell Monroe and 261, there were posts that were added into the right lane to stop people from going in the left lane because we took that turn lane away. Is there something similar that we can put on West Avenue as you're going into the circle? I know it's a left turn lane into the Huntington, but right after that, is there posts that we can put up that prevents people from getting over into that right lane?
So the problem is, is like everything else, we just can't go do it. We have to get an engineer to approve it. And as you and I talked, we are soliciting an engineer. He should have gave me back a quote to at least look at it. The big problem... The big problem we saw was the businesses drives are there. So if you go back to the roundabout that we put those posts, there was no driveways. It's pretty easy to close that lane down. How far back are you going to close that lane down? You're going to probably go to make an effect of, you're probably going to have to go back to the, to the power station.
If you put a concrete barrier where it turns though, but even if it's up there, if they go, if they try to, at least they hit that and not go up there.
That's, that's why an engineer needs. I'm not sure what we can put in there.
So even putting posts, because I know the engineer study was making that lane into a turn lane, right? But even posts like at the circle where the brick is that divides the street as you get on the circle, that would need to have an engineering study done?
Anything in that right of it?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to agenda additions. Any other agenda additions for tonight? I assume not. All right. Reports of administrative officers, starting with the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So first, we will start with the police department. As I've already alluded to, members of council have already received the safety initiative that's going out for the next two weeks. And as you will notice, the Pennwood Drive is on there as well as other items for extra patrols and traffic issues. A little bit of an update on our Flock system. We do currently have two sites that are active. Three more should be installed over the next couple of weeks. So it looks like it's rapidly going to be ramped, ramping up and getting done pretty quickly. We're also copied on some information, I think it was through social media, on the Citizens Police Academy in coordination with area police departments. The Talmadge Police Department is again going to participate in the Citizens Police Academy this fall. It has various topics over an eight-week course and they're scheduled on Wednesday starting from September 25th through the 13th, and they begin at 7:00. If anyone is interested to, in attending those, please get, please reach out to Chief Bohan to see if you're interested. Again, as you're all aware, Circle Fest was a great success. And I want to thank everyone who supported or participated, especially the Talmadge Chamber of Commerce, Talmadge Public Services, the Talmadge Police Department, as well as Springfield, Monroe Falls, and Mogadore Police Departments, the Talmadge Fire Department, the Summit County Executive's Department of Public Safety and its Emergency Management Agency, and Summit County Sheriff's Office. We did have an increased presence at our Circle Fest this year. And I think it was exceptional. And we had very few incidents that were deemed minor. And I thought it was an extreme success, so I want to thank all those agencies for their, their support. And I think we pretty much put on a model public engagement for our citizens that everyone else should take a look at what we did. And we can then have public engagements throughout the city, throughout the state. And if they would just follow our model, because it worked out well. They did a great job. I'm so proud of them all. Some updates with Parks and Rec. The Rec Center, as we know, was closed from August 9th through the 11th for the annual cleaning. There's new floor that was installed in the office area, so they went from carpet to a much nicer LVT flooring or LVF flooring. It will last much longer than the carpet, much easier to keep clean as well. As well as they refinished the aerobics rooms and those were shut down for a couple of extra days just because of the refurbishing or refinishing process. Doggy Dip is scheduled at Macca Park this Saturday, August 24th, from noon to 3:00. Please make sure if you're going to attend to pre-register for the event. How Road Ribbon, How Road Park Ribbon Cutting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 3rd at 3:00. And this includes the opening of the Dog Park, which I know, I know many of us are excited about. We also have the Talmadge Fall Festival scheduled for Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Also, kind of along that same line, the Talmadge Parks and Rec is posting a fall event survey on their social media pages. This feedback will be used to plan future fall and Halloween events that will begin in 2025. So if you have any opinions as to what you would like to see for our fall events, please make sure you take the survey and encourage your family and friends to also take it so that we make sure we have programming that our community would like. I'm sure many of you have heard, but the demolition for 1128 Woods Drive has occurred and the land is still being ready for seeding. Talmadge City Schools did, as everyone knows, started this week. I was able to attend the city's convocation, which was a great event. It's a way for our superintendent to get all of the staff together and kind of start the school year out on a great, a great note. So it was really nice for me to see for my first time as the mayor. And I did have my after-hours with the mayor today and I had people here right away at 3:55 and all the way until 6:00. Again, I did have a lot of people come in about the Pennwood issue and gave them all the same information that was given today at this, at this meeting. Couple other little issues and that's how we just increase communication within our city is by having time for people to come out and talk with us and let us know what they're feeling and what they're doing. And we're here to help serve them. So I appreciate everyone that comes. Any, any questions?
No. Thank you, Mayor. I can speak to the amount of professionalism and just the organization that goes into planning the Circle Fest. Joe took me through the trailer over there and just the command center, so to speak. And it is quite the operation.
Yes.
And I don't think, I wasn't even expecting the amount of technology that we utilize to help protect our, our citizens, protect our workers. And, you know, from, from a personal standpoint, I appreciate everything that was done to have a very well-run and organized event. And even had to kick in my, my own first aid response there in, with, with a young lady who, who had some issues while standing up in line. And within 20 seconds, Chief Underwood was there. And, and actually, former Mayor Klein was there as well. So he was, he was on the spot, still serving the city. So I just want to thank the city, the chamber, all the departments involved for an absolutely fantastic event.
It was very, very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our Director of Administration.
Not to belabor, belabor the point, but coming in 90 days before Circle Fest and seeing the camaraderie, the teamwork that's done between public services, police and fire, the chamber, it was, you know, amazing. It reminded me of the Talmadge 20 years ago that I left. And just the way that it was carried off, like you said, was just really amazing to see coming from the outside. Just one update tonight under economic development for me. The mayor and Planning and Zoning on September 17th at 5:30 will be hosting a, another community engagement to discuss the West Avenue overlay. Based on the input that Planning and Zoning has received, they've done some tweaks to different parcels. And the invite hasn't gone out yet, but it will be going out shortly. They have tweaks and then the letters will be going out like it did last time to those impacted within 500 feet of any changes to the overlay, to businesses and homeowners. So once again, as in the previous two open meetings that we've had councils invited, and that'll be 5:30 September 17th. And I believe that's a Tuesday, but I forget. I didn't write that down. So pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Nope. Moving on to Director of Public Service.
Good evening. Next Monday, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. southeast, will be shut down for McDonald's, like it was earlier in the week. They should be done by 5:00, hopefully. Some bad news. The Perry Road crossover, which was engineered this year, was going to be put on the 2025 budget, needs to get replaced soon, like real quick. It's, if you look at the map here, that's Monroe to the, to the right. It's about 300 feet from Monroe. The road to the far left is Beachler. It's about 800 feet from there. Sunday night, the picture to the left, we had a large amount of slump occur. We were able to look at that closer on Monday. The culvert seems fine. However, if you look at the bottom, it's getting roached. That's, that's all holes. It's rusted. It's a galvanized culvert. If you look at it some more, it should be smooth. If you, it's really undulated there. So it's definitely falling apart. We had an engineer go out there yesterday and recommended a half-lane closure. When he got done with his whole inspection today, it's a full road closure at this point. It's a safety issue. It's a decent-sized watershed. It's half square mile. It's actually broken into two watersheds. Everything, I can't even get that to work, everything down there to the left. So you've got Summit Racing and you even got the fire station too that drains to this culvert. So it's a decent-sized watershed. What's going to take me the most is I need four easements off the four property owners. I've got to get a head wall on this part of the culvert. Part of the problem with the culvert is it had no head wall on either end of it. So that ends, ends up causing undercutting as well as around, around the pipe during hard rains and storms. So I've stopped at all four property owners. I've made good contact with two of them. The other two I've not heard back from. I'll do this on a daily basis till we get somewhere with it. That's going to take the most time. I've reached out to three contractors to give me a price. I've got till, I gave them till September 2nd. The pipe is readily available. It should be delivered in five to six days, so that's good. So the big, the slowdown's going to be these easements. So I got to come back to council. It's going to be a reappropriation. I think I got about $65,000 in storm water fund. I probably, according, since we have the engineering done, I know the ballpark, it's $120,000 to do this job. So I'm a little short. And like I said, the easements, I got to get approval from you guys to do these four easements as well. But if you look at those four easements, they're small. They're like 400 square feet. And I think one of them is as small as 200 square feet. So they're not very big easements. I don't believe the property owners should have much problem with those easements going in there. And it really just allows to set a head wall at, at the edge of the road. And any questions on that?
I have one question related to that. I know in the past, we've had some discussion about this particular area. Did we investigate this previously?
That's why it got engineered.
That's why, okay. All right. That's why I was assuming.
Yep.
That's how I would add.
Because those residents pointed that stuff out, I think, Councilman Bullis, four years ago?
Yes.
Yes.
So yeah, we, we know the area well. That's why you had the watershed map. I mean, we've gone through all this and the crossover pipe that is failing was going to get replaced in 2025, so.
Okay. Good. Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure this was, it sounded like it was related, so.
Rain events did it in.
Yeah.
So those, those back-to-back rain events on Saturday and Sunday did that pipe in, unfortunately.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Rohr because of the amount of hours I'm sure he's putting in above and beyond, because I know just responding to my text messages and calls, even when they are butt dials or mistaken texts on either one of our parts. But, but thank you for always being responsive and addressing our citizens. You've done a fantastic job over the last numerous years, but certainly over the last week for sure.
Thank you.
So thank you. Moving on to our Director of Finance.
Thank you. I have no reports this evening. I will be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions for our Director of Finance? Nope. Thank you. Director of Law.
Thank you. We continue to work on the recodification. And again, as I reported last time, it looks like this is going to be more coming to you toward the end of this year or the beginning part of next year before we're actually able to present and report.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 10, reports of standing committees of council of the whole. We are starting with Planning and Zoning. And we will turn it over to our Vice Chair, Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Planning and Zoning to order. The Planning and Zoning Committee deals with land use, zoning, conditional uses, planning, economic and community development, and public property. Tonight, at first reading, we have ordinance 2024-54. This does require a public hearing and that is scheduled September 26, 2024, at 7:03. The ordinance is amending the zoning map by rezoning the property of applicant Brady Bizinett for Living City Farms LLC. Scott Myers, owner located at 683 North Avenue, parcel number 6000949. And 695 North Avenue, parcel number 600803, consisting of approximately 8.03 acres from R3 Residential District to R1 Residential District, and approving the general development plan. The sponsor is Councilperson Gutman, who is absent this evening. Is there any discussion?
Megan, can you tell us?
This is before, sure, this is before Planning and Zoning next month. So they'll have it in their September meeting. It's the first Thursday of September, September 5th. Thank you. And it's there on North Avenue adjacent to the new Dispatch Cog Center slash Soccer Field area. They're in that area. They were originally established with, they're, they're zone for residential right now. And they had an accessory use of a, of a garden and they have, in a farm. And they have now asking that it be the primary thing, which really they've kind of been converting over to that. They, you only can have the agricultural in an R1, which is why they're requesting that. So again, the hearing would be the beginning of September and we'll then come to you with the recommendations coming out of that meeting and then have, have that in front of you for the end of September for the full public hearing.
Can you real quick, just for people that might be listening, what's the difference between an R1 and R3? So people understand.
The size of the lots and the primary difference with this particular one is the agricultural use. So again, you can't have that in an R3, but you can in an R1 as a primary use.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Yes, I have one question. So the, the current use of the property, because I know when I drove by the other day, it currently has some temporary structures in place. I don't know, you call them like greenhouse half, I don't know what you call them. But there are currently some structures there. So I'm assuming that they, the reason for requesting this is because they're already operational, they're operating under R1 status, even though they're considered an R3.
They need to become conforming. Like they need to, they, they are non-conforming right now.
Okay. So so when, in this particular situation, was this applicant, did they put in their own application or they put the application in, in light of a zoning violation that the city issued?
They, again, originally came in and said that they were willing to be doing this as an accessory use. And then I think over time, it's morphed. And so there was discussions and they had come about discussions of what they could do. And I believe they've had neighborhood meetings already with the residents around that area. And they are now officially applying.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I, that's, you know, that's fine. Great to hear that it's growing for them. No pun intended. But, you know, obviously, yes, we want to continue to... But, you know, obviously, yes, we want to continue to make sure that it's, fits the zone that it's supposed to be. Thank you.
And Mrs. Epstein, if you could also set the public hearing for the 26th as well?
I believe she did that earlier.
I've read that, yeah.
Oh, you read that? Oh, I didn't know if you had like said it.
September. September 26th at 7:03.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further discussions, we will leave that at first reading. The next ordinance on the agenda this evening is ordinance 2024-55, Exhibit A, Exhibit A tract. The, there is also a public hearing on this one. It is set also at, on September 26, 2024, at 7:05 p.m. Amending and supplementing Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code, Section 1104.05, Use Regulation Table, Section 1104.07 E2.1, Use Regulations, Adult Use Cannabis and Medical Marijuana Operators, and Appendix A of the Talmadge Codified Ordinances, and Repealing Talmadge Codified Ordinance, Chapter 766, Medical Marijuana Cultivation, Processing, and Retail Dispensing. The sponsors of this ordinance are councilpersons Mary Gutman, Donald Pavlik, and Ted Roy. Would the sponsors like to speak to this ordinance?
I've got nothing to add at this time.
I think we're good right now. I have nothing either.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
Just to note for the public that this would be in front of Planning and Zoning as well at their next meeting. They'll be discussing this and making recommendation, and then it will be back in front of council for September 26th for the 7:05 public hearing. And also for the public, those often are set earlier than what they actually start, so.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Yes.
So, does this, did we kind of tie this together and make sure, ties together with the West Ave overlay? Do the two coincide with each other?
So, what, what the discussion, yes. I mean, so what we did is not tied specifically to the West Avenue overlay, instead it's, we discussed where it would be, and it very much models itself after what the state regulations are with the addition of just spelling out the parks to make sure we've included all the parks, including the Freedom Trail, so that it's, takes that into consideration because it wasn't 100% clear in the state's definition. And it's very much similar to that. The benefit of us spelling it out, as was discussed with the, you know, when we, we met, is that then if the state changes their code to permit them in different places or or changes things, then we have ours codified so that it would still have those regulations with distances to schools and churches and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Is there, and again, I, without diving too deep into this for this evening, but do we include anything in there about any like children-related type businesses? So, whether it be like a dance school, or it would that be considered a, it says private or public school, is that considered a private school if it's like a dance studio or a?
So, I don't think that would meet the definition. I think it's more like considered like a, like a daycare meets the definition under the Ohio Vice Code of, of schools, like, so I, I don't think that that's part of what's envisioned here.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, those are the two ordinances in front of us this evening. Are there any additional items for Planning and Zoning? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. Moving on to our Finance Committee, Councilman Pavlik.
The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. We have no ordinances presented or resolutions presented before us tonight in finance. Is there anything that council wishes to discuss? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. Moving on to Personnel, Councilman Bowles.
Thank you. I call Personnel Committee to order. Personnel Committee deals with personnel, labor relations, insurance claims, rules of counsel, and state statutes. We have no ordinances or resolutions before us this evening. Does anyone on council or administration have anything to come before Personnel Committee? All right. With that, I'll close committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Safety Committee, Councilmember Rubino.
Thank you. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, paramedics, police, and health. We currently have no legislation before us for the Safety Committee. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns to bring to the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. Community Issues, Councilman Rory.
Open community issues tonight. The Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Recreation, Civic Affairs, and liaison between council and the Recreation Board and intergovernmental affairs. Tonight, we have no legislation. Somebody else has any additional comments? If not, I will close committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Service, Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highway, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy, resource, recycle, waste, and trash. We have nothing before us this evening. Are there any additional items?
I just had one thing. I, I looked up in my notes from August of 2021, the Monroe and Perry flooding complaints to the hydraulic engineer came out on September 2nd to do the assessment of that, and I, I do remember all of that now, so. That's all I had.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. Moving on to reports of special committees, Council Operations Committee, Councilman Bowles.
Yeah, just an announcement from IT that occasionally reminding council that they need to come in to make sure that their laptop's getting the updates required for the IT department. And lastly, if you haven't picked up your mobile device, please contact the IT department. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to mention, too, let's get our trainings up to date. I know I get those emails every, almost every day.
Every day.
Yeah, every day. And, and then we did just get some new outlets installed as well by council, or by IT, so thank you for that. And the new mics are working out great as well, so.
And if I may also add.
Yes.
In regard to trainings, just, Ally sent another email reminder to everyone, but please make sure you do your fraud training that is now required through the state legislature for every current employee and elected official to do. It really is very easy. It takes less than 10 minutes, and you just need to have a copy of your certificate so it's on file, so hopefully everyone gets that done before August 30th.
Good, thanks. Yeah, if we can get that reminder email, that'd be great. Is that the same email that we received recently? I think it said something about auditor. Yeah, okay. That's the same one. Got it. Okay, thank you. Any further announcements?
Yes, I have one. This is from the Girl Scouts. One of the troop leaders wanted me to remind and inviting the city and council to an October 17th event at 6:00 p.m. It's the Talmadge Girl Scout Service Unit Bridging and Rededication. It's their court of award ceremony. The, the place is to be determined right now, but as soon as we get that, they're inviting city administration, council, the public to attend this ceremony. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further announcements? No? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk.
Jessica, Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bowles.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes. The time is now 8:39, and we are adjourned.